702 will call meetings ordered. Mr. Hunter, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is hence my mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Records show Mr. Doudna is absent, all other board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
It has, we are working off the revised agenda from last Friday.
Public comment. Per policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comments must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student, or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communications to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Steele?
No comments.
Thank you. On to reports, 4A Student Council Report.
All right, first we'll go over what our committees have been doing. The fundraising committee is planning to do a bake sale at the Choir Pops concert on March 4th, and we are looking into having a share night with Papa Murphy's and doing spring concessions, and those proceeds would go to charity. The events committee is doing a blood drive on March 6th in the RCHS gym, and you can sign up for that on the redcross.org. School improvement and policy is still working on the period project, it's going well. Student council has received multiple compliments and students are respecting the availability of products. The school and community service committee worked on cleaning out the leadership room. Bathroom built with tins are still being done each month, and recently the trophy case in the East Commons was reorganized and looks much more put together and eye-catching. Administration will be receiving a memo with an itinerary soon about details regarding student council state convention. And with that, we'll move on to our state committees. Speech and writing still does not have a designated member for it. Best project will be led by Ella Halashim, and the period project will be used for this competition. Creative marketing will be led by Clara Shannon. Leadership and empowerment and expansion will be led by Elise Stoffslund. Standards of excellence will be led by Catherine Hall. Scrapbook will be led by Zeta Ludwood. T-shirt will be led by Maddie Biebel Lefler. And a committee is not needed for this project because Maddie has designed the shirts herself, and the same design will be presented at state convention. And lastly, Banner will be led by Hannah Foga. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Can we get your name, please?
Karen O'Callaghan.
And you are part of the officers?
Yes.
And what's your ranking?
I am the course lighting secretary.
Thank you. Thank you. 4B Teacher-led Pilot Program Update by Mr. Troxel.
So the link for the presentation has been in the board books, hopefully the board members got a chance to look at that. Mr. Troxel is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding it. At the end of his presentation, he had talked about three different changes that would be proposed to be made to this program. First and second change were more administrative guidelines and how we would be handling some things, but the third, the addition of that coach, again, he's here to answer any specific questions that you may have regarding that. That's on the agenda later on for this evening for the board to take action on. Questions for Mr. Troxel?
Hi, regarding the scorecard or the report card, okay, so is that really the only way that we're measuring? I mean, is there more real-time data to know how we're doing rather than waiting for the report card? Because my understanding of the report card was it comes the year later.
Yeah, absolutely, so definitely take a look at that stuff, so we want to see how we're progressing from year to year. You know, the certain data, when we take those assessments, that'll be more quarterly data that we can take a look at, and then also within that, each department will probably choose something that's a little more specific to what they do. Like social studies, we'll have to take a look at literacy data, but ELA obviously will look at literacy data, and math will look at some of that math component stuff as well. So that's, we have to figure out exactly what that timely data is. You want to make sure that it's long enough, or it doesn't expire, we can take action on, you know, remediation if need be. So that'll be up for each department to take a look at that. So content data will be more short-term, quarterly data is certain, and then kind of the state report card, if we're going to do a state assessment, the scores will be more regularly down, so we can kind of get a whole picture of how the data is shifting and changing.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to the report card, you put in there comparison to other schools that were similar sized. Just knowing from when Dr. Johnson did her presentation on that scorecard, that that big number doesn't mean as much as when you break it down, how do we compare once you break down into the segments that we're trying to address with the achievement compared to those other schools? Because the scores seem very close, very similar across those?
Right, absolutely, so I think we can just take a look at where we score specifically, maybe not in achievement, because that's 90% of our overall score, but we're going to focus more on the growth data. You know, I mean, we'd have to look at the demographic data for each school district and how we compare specifically to that. You know, it just kind of gives us a barometer of how we're scoring, you know, relative to our student population in this area. But that's where we're going to take a look at, where we're at versus where we were before, right? So like last year's data, we were at 54.2, let me look here, well, 55.2, right? So we can see from last year to this year, we're at 64.8. So we can go in and we can kind of break that up and start to pick down in small 50.
I did have a question with the term limits that you're looking at. Knowing that there's a heavy lift going on right now, what's the, I guess, the logic behind the three years versus being four years or five years?
We wanted to make sure that this is, that it opens up opportunity for other people that are interested in coaching, you know, and so if you're in there for four years or five years, you know, that kind of limits the opportunity for people to get into it. So we wanted to make sure it was short enough to leave an impact, but, or sorry, long enough to leave an impact, right, but short enough for people that are looking to kind of phase into this, that they can do that in a fairly timely manner. So three years is kind of an arbitrary number, we just feel like that's enough to kind of see if you're effective in that role, right, and kind of make some decisions if you are or are not.
And how soon do you think the, as you mentioned that we weren't sure when that would be implemented?
Right, so starting next fall, we'll go through an actual coaching process, you know, some of us have past experience with training, and so we'll all get on the same page at Richland Center, middle school, high school, right? This is what coaching looks like, and so once that's done, everybody's been trained and equipped in those strategies, then we can start talking about what that would look like, you know? But certainly, it wouldn't be a wholesale change every three years, and you have three or four new people, right? At some point, we're going to have to figure out who is phased out first and what that process looks like. And that's yet to be determined, because we want to wait until we're all adequately trained to start that work.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
Other questions for Mr. Troxel? Again, take action on his proposal to add an additional coach later on in the agenda, but it's a great time to get your questions answered if you have them.
Thank you.
Again, for the public, that presentation's online, there's a link on there, it's a wonderful presentation, thank you, Mr. Troxel.
4C, the district administrators' report.
Okay, just a handful of announcements, reminders for the board and our public. This Thursday is an early release for our students, and that is, parent-teacher conferences will start on Thursday afternoon shortly after buses have departed, and that will continue until 8:00 PM on Thursday evening, so we encourage our parents to visit their children's schools and, you know, communicate with those teachers and have a good dialogue. Friday then will be no school for students, that is a full day in-service for our staff to get some classroom work done after the parent-teacher conferences. Next week, Thursday, March 7th, we will have committee meetings resume for the month of March, policy will be at 6 o'clock, curriculum will follow, 7:15, possibly 7:30, that will be determined at a later date, but curriculum will follow policy, policy will start at 6:00 PM. And then finally, we have launched a referendum website for factual information on the website, Nexus has helped us put that together, there is a link on our district website that will take you right to that site as well. So if you have board members and or public has, gets questions, or if they have questions of theirselves, they can submit questions, they can find information specifically as it relates to the referendum on our website. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you.
All right, 4D, board member reports.
The Richland School District Foundation met on the 19th, working more on scholarships, getting that ready to go. There have been, there has been one scholarship where the kids were able to come in workshop to come in and work on that. We talked about a couple of the scholarship updates that are happening, the deadline for the scholarships is March 22nd. The scholarship awards night will be May 22nd, which is a Wednesday evening, that's where we announce the who's awarded those scholarships. We discussed the Shurman McKenzie Making a Difference Award, which is the award that is for students who are kind, so it's not necessarily academic-based, it's not necessarily achievement-based. So there've been a little bit of tweaks to that to just get that updated, so it's a little bit more understandable for the criteria for that, for the teacher-selected process. And we did accept, Mrs. Neiman requested to do a musical again this next school year, and the reasoning behind that was to get us opposite of Hillsborough, so it'll be every other year, it just happened to be this year, we're going back-to-back, and so that, she's in the process of picking up the show for that, we'll have to review that.
Kick.
Kick, I'm sorry, kick who's cool, I mean, opposite of theirs.
Buildings, property, and transportation met Thursday, February 15th. Our first item is our monthly schedule at a glance for the school year. A few of the items we will have later on consent, the first being our 10-year capital improvement plan, which is a Fund 46 that has a deposit made a few years back that basically, we have a 10-year kind of big-picture overview of what's expected to budget on those improvements. We had project planning for the summer of 2024. The next item was the equipment replacement plan for food service, just learning how they go about and when they go about upgrading certain items. The next two items would also be on consent agenda tonight, which is to approve the milk bid, which would be Prairie Farms on, they were ours last year, so they will be continuing, as well as the purveyor bid, which Sisal Verabut is who we would continue to work with.
All right, thank you. To the minutes, 5A. Is there a motion to approve the period meeting minutes of February 12, 2024?
So both?
Motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Troxel, discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 All right, on to financial items, 6A, approval of statement of cash.
I move to approve the statement of cash dated February 22nd, 2024.
Motion was made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would draw your attention to the first goal, cash on deposit, community first, temporary activity, you can see there's a lot of activity there. That's basically the second-third of the levy payments coming in from all the municipalities. So that'll put us about two-thirds of the way there, and then the last payment will come in around July.
Thank you. Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
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 6B, approval of invoices.
I move to approve Community First Bank General Checking Account checks number 86033 through number 86070, ACH number 232401029 through 232401112, and ETF number 20230067 through 202300071, for a net total of $558,767.41. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Huntimer. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would draw your attention to page three of the expenditures. About halfway down there, you'll see something that says Payment to Lunch Account from donations, and in fact, there's another donation later on, agenda that you would, motion to accept. Over the summer, the board, the policy committee and the board made some changes to food service collection, so we changed some of the dollar thresholds, and we changed some of the frequencies, how frequently parents and family were being reminded of their food service balances, especially when they become negative. And I, from that change, I believe we've made some positive movements, and it's kind of inspired some of these donations that are coming in. Everybody is a little bit more aware of food service balances now, to the extent that some of our administrators have done a great thing and have been soliciting for some donations, and people are very willing to give donations to families that are in need. We've also seen our number of families that do qualify for free and reduced lunch, we've seen an increase in the number of applications filled out, so that's a positive for us as well. The other expenditures there, there's a lot of typical expenditures for the month that you're used to seeing, that's probably the one outlier.
Question for you, Mr. Bosworth. If somebody now qualifies for the free and reduced program, but they were unaware that they did before, does it backdate, or does it start from the day things are approved moving forward only?
Mr. Board, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it starts from the day they fill out the application.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 6C, Essar Budget Update.
Stolen, can we?
Yeah, it wasn't sure what to text, so I just came prepared with some paper.
Thank you.
So I think we'll be okay. So the chart that is handed out in paper form is in board docs, and you have access to the board doc website, you can find this chart in here, it's PDF. Did make one change today, there were a couple of categories that need to be a little more descriptive, so we did that, but denoted it in the notes. Mr. Board said that we are looking for kind of an upper-level outlook on where we're at with Essar spending, so I just want to start by reminding folks that the Richland School District claims all of our Essar allowances at the conclusion of the '22-'23 school year. And in so doing, that stimulus money was used, we put it towards the requirements. Some of the monies that we were able to claim allowed us to supplant some of our already existing expenditures, which saved us some other money that we designated in a fund balance. You'll remember at the conclusion of last year, there was quite a process to go through, we solicited lots of feedback from lots of people on how the district might allocate and spend some of this money that we had come into. And just going to give you kind of a high-level view of where that spending is at. So in this, in this graph, you can see on the bottom there, the blue is the dollars that we would have budgeted, and then the orange color is how much has been expended to date. So at the very top there, you'll see a couple of lines for roofing. We had planned to finish the roof in phases, the roof is still not completed, you know that, it's part of the referendum talk that has been ongoing. However, the second-to-last phase is scheduled to be completed, and that's the monies that we had designated at the end of '22-'23, and the remainder of '23-'24, that will go to finish the second-to-last phase, and the last phase, if the referendum does pass, will be completed in the future. The third line down there, personnel, that is the money that we have set aside for the three-year plan to go towards the teacher-leader curriculum pilot project that Mr. Troxel was talking about earlier, and we'll begin spending money out of that very shortly. The next line down, district tech hardware maintenance, this is a lot of money that was essentially designated for the maintenance department to finish some things. Below, you can see RCHS athletics, this was money that was, a lot of the money was given to each sport to kind of choose as they wish, and then there were some specific dollar values in there, for example, purchase of a wrestling mat, you know, so that, so those expenditures have been, have taken place. The next three lines there, high school, intermediate, primary, supplies, and equipment, so money was allocated towards each building, and those building administrators were the deciders of where that money could be spent inside of their buildings for equipment upgrades or supplies or things such like that, so you can see that they're well on their way to spending those monies. Other curriculum, some of the things to date that have been expended out of that category would be the smart boards across the district, the new website, some new risers, and a box out bullying program, a three-year purchase, so those are all wonderful purchases. The next line down, Essar unassigned, this is dollars that we left unassigned, the board still has to determine how that will be spent. If we decide, if the board decides to make the change to the curriculum pilot project that Mr. Troxel and that group has proposed, we would shift a little bit of money from the unassigned into that personnel category to make sure that that, that those dollar values are allocated. District technology, that includes, that included a lot of work done on our athletic facilities regarding sound and internet upgrades. And then finally, the bottom three categories are high school, intermediate school, and primary school salaries and benefits, I should say the bottom four, including district. Those are the Essar positions, all right? So those are the salaries and benefits that are earmarked towards the positions that were created with Essar dollars. Mr. Board, anything to add, or board members any questions?
So the salaries and benefits, those last four at the bottom, that'll just continue to grow as we, you know, reach out into the fiscal year, so those would, are pretty much all accounted for.
And those are the five-and-a-half FTE positions?
And then some, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, on to consent agenda items. I will point out that 7B is being pulled from consent agenda, it'll be 10C, and 7E will also be pulled from consent agenda, and it will be 10D. Mrs. Steele?
Motion to accept the donation of $300 from an anonymous donor to help cover the costs of food service for students in need per policy 7230. Motion to approve the recommendation of Prairie Farms as the milk provider for the RSD for the next three school years, '24-'25, '25-'26, and '26-'27. Motion to approve the recommendation for the long-range capital improvement plan as presented. Motion to approve the recommendations of the revised job descriptions as presented. And motion to approve the budget revisions for the '23-'24 fiscal year as presented in accordance with the provisions of the Wisconsin statute 6595A. This shall require at least two-thirds majority vote, and that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
I'll make that.
Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey, discussion. Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
Motion? I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Wirtz, seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion. Mrs. Wirtz?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the anonymous donor for their generosity. All right, on to item nine, information discussion items, 9A, district transfers and vacancies.
So you'll see four PDFs in this agenda item for attachments, two of them are for support staff, one for the '23-'24 school year, and one for the '24-'25 school year, and then the same would be true, two for the certified staff as well. Starting with the '23-'24 school year, we do still have one night custodian position that we're looking for and taking applications for, and then we do have the One World Language position still posted. Again, we had a plan for quarter three, we're still hoping that we can try to find somebody to fill the, this position for quarter four, but I know our administration is working to try to come up with a plan on if we don't find anybody, so far we've not had any. And if we don't find anybody, so far we've not had any, any interest in that position for the rest of this year. 2425, we do have a Cross Cat Eight position that is posted, along with seven different certified staff positions that are posted, that we are in the posting process. Those, that posting ends early March or after. And then we will be conducting interviews as soon as those posting ends, those postings end. And then I'm sure that we'll have a few more along the way as well, but we'll keep those updated as, as we can. Any questions from the Board?
For the positions that are listed as a one-year contract, do they have the opportunity to then apply for full time?
Absolutely. Anytime we hire somebody, right before the school year starts or during the school year, they are automatically put on a, a one-year. They're not non-renewed. It just expires at the end of one year. And then they have the ability to reapply for that position as well.
Do they have preference with that?
No, we would take the best candidate.
Any other questions? All right, it's 9B, the AGR Mid-Year Report.
So each year, the Board sees our AGR data. We're required to give a mid-year report and then an end-of-the-year report. I know that Mrs. Johnson was having difficulty getting logged in due to the Zoom technicalities. Amy Hardy, I hate to put you on the spot, but are you able to give a quick overview?
Hang on. More, do you know?
Yes, take your time.
And they all have this, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
No pressure.
No pressure. I did it wrong. I'm sorry. Okay. Evening. So I'm looking at referencing this sheet, which is what I believe you all have access to. Is that correct?
That's the attachment in the board notes.
Okay, perfect. So when you look at this information, it is breaking down how our students are performing when you're looking at beginning of the year, mid-year. And then we will do eye-ready reading and eye-ready math as our chosen assessment as a district with our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade students. And so when you're identifying and looking at the table, you're looking at students of low income and then students of other. And this is known by very few people, really myself, and then Mrs. Brown in computing the third grade information. So because people have said, well, you know, can't we bring up these percentages and really kind of teach to that student group or that population? And that's not the case. We aren't teaching based on economic, on economic level or abilities. We teach to all of our students to the maximum we possibly can with the greatest impact that we can. But this does break it down because Achievement Gap Reduction, their focus is that students that are falling within low income are still making progress and are still being successful in the school environment. And that we're doing all we can to make that happen for them as educators. Achievement Gap Reduction, we're in a five-year agreement with DPI. It is through DPI. And we are in the fourth year of this five-year agreement. And what that means for us is we are either working in having lower class student-to-teacher ratios, so 18 or less. That means we are using coaching or tutoring with our students. And in some cases, we were doing multiple of those with our classrooms in trying, in order to try and not only double dip, but triple dip some of our students to help close that academic gap that they may have in reading or math. So at the primary school, we have an AGR teacher, is what we actually call her, Mrs. Nelson. So she teams and works with students with reading and as well as with math. And then we have our title teachers that also help support these students in helping close that gap. But specifically, Mrs. Nelson at the primary. And then we have teachers with our classroom members at 18 or less in our first grades and our kindergartens. And some of those staff are paid through the funds of this opportunity. Are there questions that you might have for me?
I'm going to piggyback off of it. You will, you will also see there are eight charts at the bottom of that PDF. The red line in each chart represents the percent of non-low-income families. And the blue is the low-income families. The gap that we're trying to reduce is the distance between those two lines. Okay, and so in a perfect world, you would see the red and the blue lines mirror each other, be right on top of each other. Meaning our low-income families are achieving at the exact same rate as our, as our non-low-income families. But if they, there is a gap, we would want to see that gap reduced over time. And so you're going to see three years of data for each of the grades, kindergarten, first, second, and third. These are not cohort groups. In other words, they're not following the same group of students each year. It's the 2122 kindergarten group, and then the 2223 kindergarten group, and now the 2324 kindergarten group. But you can see how big of a gap there may be. For instance, in the fall, and then how that gap is reducing, in many cases, as we move through the winter and into the spring with that cohort. And so it's a visual of what we're really trying to do as we quote-unquote reduce the gap. That's the gap we're trying to reduce. Any questions from the Board? Go ahead.
A comment to Mrs. Hardy and Mrs. Brown. So if my math is accurate, we have four grade levels that fall into this assessment. Each having two subject matters, so four times the two should be eight. Seven of those eight have noticed that the low income has had a higher percentage of increase in their assessments. So clearly, what you folks are doing in both of these buildings is working well. So I commend you on your efforts and your staff.
Our staff certainly work hard. I mean, they are working in their classrooms with small groups, full group, one-on-one. And now it's across the board. And they certainly put a lot of energy in trying to meet the students where they're at and then continue to move them forward.
Just forward thinking, knowing that summertime is a struggle for all kids, are there, are you in discussion on things that can be done over the summer to help shrink that gap even more in working with the, all the kids, but especially the low-income kids?
Certainly summer school. We've already started to have those conversations. And that will be moving forward to you in the coming weeks. Summer school, we are hoping to have that run again. It's a four-week session because it does give students and families a little bit of a break in June. And then in July, we start to pick up again with summer school. And so summer school is always encouraged for students that might be struggling with reading, math. But it is also an opportunity to help pals that need that social opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job on the impromptu speech.
All right, on to action items. 10A, Changes in Special Education Staffing Plans, 2024-25.
All right, so just a quick summary of what the proposal is here. The Board recently approved the staffing plans for 2425 at the last Board meeting. With that, there was kind of a disclaimer that special education is kind of this fluid group that we've got to constantly look at and continue to look at and meet the IEPs. Currently, when I say currently, this school year, if all positions are filled, we have one teacher in our ID classroom, an intellectual delayed disability at the high school, along with three aides, full-time aides. And the outlook or projections for next year indicate that we could have at least 18, possibly more students in this, in this classroom. That's a lot of students for one teacher, even with the supports. And so the proposal, in an effort to get the best bang for our buck, is to shift that, those four positions, instead of one teacher and three aides, to two teachers and two aides. And essentially, truly for the price difference of a salary and an aide to a teacher, since they're both full-time and would be benefit eligible positions anyway, that minimal impact, or that minimal difference in salary would have a huge impact in our ID classroom, having two certified teachers to be able to split that up into two classrooms with an aide. Obviously, there would be a lot of teamwork going on there. But Mr. Joe Semen, I feel that that would be a great way to meet the needs of those students, give them the high numbers in there. Mr. Joe Sem, anything did I miss on there that you want to add? Any questions for myself or Mr. Joe Sem?
What are the responsibility differences between the teacher and the aides that would be having the same number of people in that classroom? What is, what's the...
You know, primary, one of the primary differences is the teachers are on the community structure. Teachers really can't deliver the material. Teachers have to. The aides can certainly support that. And when you have 18-plus students who are probably our lower functioning students in the district, it's hard to teach that many students with one teacher.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the hiring of an additional RCHS Intellectual Disability Classroom teacher for the 2024-25 school year? Motion made by Mrs. Troxel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Discussion?
Aye.
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 10B, Change in Staffing Plans for Curriculum Pilot.
Okay, so this is piggybacking off of Mr. Troxel's presentation earlier. You know that the, some teachers at the Richland Center High School have piloted this Teacher Leadership Program. Any pilot needs to be continually evaluated and tweaked so that we can best meet the needs of our students. In this particular proposal, we are looking at adding an additional coach to allow the current position of Data/CTE Coach to become two separate coaches, a Data Coach and a CTE Coach. That would come at the expense of $5,000 stipend for that coach in the 2425 school year and whoever's in that position for the 2526 school year. Total of $10,000. Mr. Bosworth alluded to earlier, that Essar unallocated amount, it's just under $100,000. This would be taken from there and earmarked for this position. So it would be an additional coaching position, $10,000 over the course of the next two years for that position so that we can continue to try to move that program forward. This did pass Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development Committee and the Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations, Relations Committee. Both of them passed and are recommending this change as well.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation from the Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development Committee and the Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations Committee in adding a Teacher Leadership Coach, starting with the 2024-25 school year as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, Mr. Hunter. Discussion?
It's not a problem to allocate something from another further year down the road as far as the school year is concerned?
No, not a problem at all. We would, this is in our fund balance. And so at the end of the year, anything that we have carried over to the next year, the Board would take action on and commit it in their fund balance. Very similar to what we do with HRE contributions for the second half of an employee's deductible.
Any other discussion? Questions? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 10C, working on our Modified Agenda here. 10C is the, is a gift donation of Wisconsin Technology Education Association and conference funds from Wallace, Cooper, and Elliott.
It's a pretty straightforward agenda item, but was asked to be pulled just because of a connection.
Is there a motion to accept the donation of Wisconsin Technology Education Conference Funds, valued at approximately $600 from Jeremy Coe at Wallace, Cooper, and Elliott, per Policy 7230?
So motion?
Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Discussion? Mr. Troxel?
I'm staying.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
10D, still working off our Modified Agenda here. The Purveyor Bids for 2024-25.
Similarly, this was pulled from consent due to a connection with the food purveyor chosen. This came from the Building's Property Transportation Recommendation to Approve Cisco Foods as the Food Purveyor for the Richland School District for next school year.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for Cisco Foods as Food Purveyor for RSD for the 2024-25 school year?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Troxel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 I'm staying.
Just for folks' information, we'll be conducting closed session in Room 101. I'll make a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Section 19.851 CE and/or F of the Wisconsin Statutes, 118.125, to consider employment promotion, compensation of specific individual employees, and discuss individual employee hiring and related compensation, administrative evaluations, individual student discipline, and student open enrollment and applications, and consider a termination of open enrollment. We will take action on these issues in closed session if necessary, appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, we will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Thank you.